Before we start the meeting, in public forum or whenever, if you want to address the council, raise your hand, I'll call on you, get to the podium, state your name. It's not for us, it's for the camera. And if you start yelling between each other, then we'll dismiss you. This is a council meeting, not just yelling because you disagree with somebody. Public forum, anybody want to say anything?
I do.
Go ahead.
After watching the video on, oh, kind of, sorry. After watching the video of last time's meeting, I have a question for each of you. I asked Scott, and I didn't get a very good answer. So I want to know who's had sexual discrimination training here. Have you?
No.
Darry?
No.
Dan?
John?
The reason I ask is, the comment that you made, Dave, that a woman should not be the next mom member of P and Z, you were being sexually, you were sexually discriminating against her.
So would that be the same as when Vick mentioned that the last?
No, because you were telling, because this time, if you had five people, you had two female, two male, so it was gender, it was gender, whatever you want to say.
Neutral.
Neutral, yeah, that's what I wanted to say, but I did think it sounded right, but gender neutral. And once you add that fifth, it can be male or female. So when you say it had to be a female, you're walking a fine line on sexual discrimination. I would recommend that everybody that either is on council or works for the city have sexual discrimination. I came from the corporate world, and that's what we did, because I was shown bias. Scott, is there a training that could be offered?
I'd have to do some checking on that. There is that, that gender equity law on boards is what you.
Well, I know that's what the center is, but if they haven't had it, we're not following what they should do. If it's mandatory in the state by law, we should be doing that. We're going to get, we're having a lawsuit, otherwise we're not careful. You know, somebody will do something.
As far as the equity on boards, we have been addressing the equity on boards that should be out.
Okay, well, they still think they should all be, have sexual discrimination training. You're, you're walking a fine line. When the corporations do it, you should do it too. I mean, every board I've ever sat on, you all have to have it.
I think we got it up to MLA training. You should go. Tell me I'm reading it to that.
Is there a whole section on that, or?
Well, I got some through there, but then I also got some through our business.
Yeah, I'm sure you have some work. Yeah. Well, I'm just stating what I think, but I, it looked like circus in that last one and that, and we just can't have that. It's gender biased, and we cannot say things like that.
Let's see if we can figure out something.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Dale?
Good morning, or good afternoon, evening. Dale Beckman, 175 Crescent Park Drive. I have a question on the Camp Crescent project. We talked about a couple of years ago, just some person's clarifications. I got, Dave got me a copy of the plans and proposals. I just need some explanation of what's going on, if we're eliminating the swell, going to have the swell, if we're going to try and make water run to the, I'm going to call it to the south. You know what I mean? Like, because we didn't have an upgrade last time in the fall, because we can't make water run uphill, is that what you're still going to try and do? Or can you explain to me your project explanations there?
Sure. The project's largely the same. Okay? When you see the thing in the plans called that beauty mound?
Yep.
Okay? That is not proposed to be there anymore, there's not, not proposed to be any standing water within, within that drainage slip. So, you know, according to that, they make it so that it can drain, they can get a drainage well to drain to the lake.
From which point?
Correct. From the north, it's about the north fence line.
How, how are you going to make water run uphill, Scott? You didn't get, now, I'm just asking you this, but you didn't get the grant last time because there wasn't, the water wasn't going to go uphill?
Because there wasn't enough area to percolate water.
Correct, because it doesn't go, it doesn't flow uphill.
It, that had to do with.
So, so if you, if you go down there when you get a rain, water flows to the north, currently today. So is the city, my question is, is the city wasting money trying to make water run uphill? I've lived there for 26 years, and I know which direction the water runs. My point is, you're going to try and put a ditch through there, and I maintain that ground down there for the city on the city ground. I got to mow it, I got to maintain it, I want to be able to mow it and maintain it.
Yeah. Yeah, and that's still the idea, you know, it may be a drainage.
To make water run uphill?
No.
No, 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 no. That's what it is, Scott.
Yeah, I guess I'm deferring to, to those engineered set of plans.
So, so the engineers that you hired to do these plans?
Yeah.
Two years ago?
Yeah.
Never once went out and did a grade, never once. No grade stakes whatsoever. When they build a road, they go out and put grade stakes, they get out a transit, they do all that stuff. They never did that.
They, they.
No, they didn't. Scott, we've already had this conversation.
It's.
So my point is, you're moving forward on something that you don't have all the accurate information. I mean, you guys know as well as I do and most of the public, there's been some issues with their engineering firms. We had one again. We talked about the two trees, what they said are side by side, which weren't. John even defended me on that, when I said I got to take two more swipes through it. I just think the city and the council should look at that before you keep moving forward and spend maybe an extra $50,000. I think the cement pads are a great idea redoing, the sewer's a great idea, but you're going to try and make water run uphill? I just want to see it happen. That, that's my point. And, and I think you guys need to really look at that before you continue to move forward. Move forward with your cement pads, move forward with the sewer, but if you're going to put a grade in there, then you better get somebody in there to haul a whole bunch of dirt on the north side and east and get it to go to the south.
There, there is a whole slew of dirt moving involved with the, I would tell you that.
Is there, during any of these plans?
Fourteen thousand yards?
I don't see them on these plans.
I don't know that I give them the entire set, but yeah.
So how do you expect people to know if you don't give them the complete information? How's people supposed to know if you don't have the complete information?
About all of the detail that went along with it.
Yeah. How do, how do you know? See my point? How does the council make a good decision if they don't, this is what the council got, how do they make a good decision on something? Just asking the question.
I guess check the page numbers, Dale, as far as whether I give them the whole thing or not, I'm not sure.
Well, I, I will do that, but I just, my point is, the council needs to check into that before they move forward, because not once was there a grade stake out there. And there needs to be a grade stake. Anybody sitting here knows that, including the mayor.
They charged us void up, I guess.
What's that?
I'm pretty sure they charged us.
We were charged. Well, that's what I mean, but there was never a grade stake out there. The night I was sitting next to him, he says, well, we go off Google Earth. You can't go off Google Earth on something like this. That's exactly what he told me that night he was sitting there.
Look into it. Rich?
I, just a question, I don't know if I'm in the right spot or not, I started to ask some questions at the last meeting, and I kind of got cut off from midstream, and I didn't know, it's on item number six, so I could wait till number six?
Go ahead.
Go ahead. Okay. My question was, was what qualifies the planning and zoning committee, what qualifies them to tell me how to build my house? Well, I never got a very good answer. So then, I started to ask another question, and then, and like I said, I got caught up, but John was good enough, I asked him the question after the meeting. I said, so what qualifies somebody to be a member on this committee? And he said, there are no qualifications, there are no requirements. That struck me incredibly weird. I, I thought, this committee brings recommendations on housing and building and construction to the council for their possible approval? Is that correct? Yes. And we don't know if these people know anything about that subject matter of construction or housing.
We have, we have a lot of boards in town, there was no qualifications for anybody.
They're all volunteers.
Board of, they're all volunteers, if you, some people know more than others, but I know they had a lot of research. If you went to the P and Z meetings, they had volumes of paper that they went through.
Well.
And they're not telling you how to build a house, they're telling you some guidelines they, they think is important.
Based on, based on what? Based on what? You know, the, the, you know, I'm glad, glad you got a Realtor on the, on the board, or on the committee, it sounds like, but if you're going to talk about construction and housing and building, there should be carpenters and plumbers and electricians and siding people, or lumberyard people, there's got to be people around that are immersed in this, uh, subject that, that could be super beneficial, that, that would reinforce my thought, that this, this seems like maybe something the guys should accept. Uh, you know, the guys that go home with sawdust in their hair and sheet rock dust all over them, them are the people, the local carpenters.
Can you tell me why they don't volunteer?
Too busy.
I don't know. I have a good approach. I mean, I.
You put them in the paper.
I mean, I mean, John Meredith and Rick Nelson and, gee whiz, Randy Boos and, and, you know, that's just, just a sample off the top of my head.
Like Frank, for example.
There, there's retired guys around here, that, that worked their whole lives, whole lives, in the construction and building and housing, their whole lives, forty, fifty years. Meyer Peterson, Roger Peterson, uh, Clausen, shoot for his first name, Ronnie Bettine. My goodness, those are the people that should be making housing and construction and building recommendations.
I, I agree, but they don't, when we add, put an ad out, nobody, nobody wants to do it.
Is there a list? Have, have they ever been called or approached?
They won't call anybody. They, we put out the list, if you want to volunteer, you can call up and get your name on there. We're not going to spend all day calling everybody.
Well, let's talk about that, if I can switch gears here just for a little bit.
Go ahead.
If I got this right, you had, you had just nominated a person or put them on the committee last, at the last meeting. If I got this right, there were two other candidates that fought, they were on the list. I called them both, took them five minutes or less, find out Bart and Mike both thought they were candidates for the list. And Scott, I, I almost hate to accuse you of anything, but I think you pigeonholed those two candidates in favor of this other one.
Oh, I, I would take offense to that.
Yeah, well, I, your, your answer when, when this was brought up, you didn't give a very good answer as to why those people weren't contacted.
As far as, as far as Bart, yeah, I agree, I never contacted him, of course I did contact Mike, told him what was going on.
So how, how did this happen? No interview process, no? What's, what's the criteria for appointing this particular person instead of the two? How did it happen?
Written applications is what, is what had, what the formal portion of it.
And who, and who looks over that, written application?
City council.
Council. Good, good, good. Well, I said, it should be the entire council, that's for sure. Well, that's my concern, um, that's my concern. I'm not, I'm not convinced that we got the right people making housing and, and construction and building recommendations that's satisfying me.
Mike, did you have something you wanted to say?
Well, I just, I applied, and I got construction experience, I just. And I thought I got railroaded, railroaded out of it right off the bat, no discussion, but that's.
Do they all have the applications to the packets?
I agree, and they got railroaded right through. It's, that's over with, it's done.
I just like to make one comment, I really don't want to get into this too much, but the whole council has a packet, they have all the applications. A person makes a motion, I went to, um, the Iowa League of Cities Training for council members, I've gone twice. I don't know if the other council members have gone or not. One of the things I learned is, is you bring a motion to the floor, someone makes a motion, if there is a second, then there is discussion on the motion, and then there is a vote. It either passes or it doesn't. I don't think any councilperson on this council confers with other councilmembers prior to a vote. You know, I'm not saying one or two don't talk, but I would never talk to more than one councilperson, because about anything, unless we're all in session. And I don't believe the other ones do either. Everybody runs for the council because they have a vision of what they think the community should go towards, or how they think things are being handled. And, and so then you follow with what your vision is, and it might not be what someone else's is, but that's what the council is made of, of five people, so that you never have a tie, and that the vote is on. You know, I was not in favor of giving the TIF money a while back, you know, and I'm just trying to think of hot issues. I was in favor of the TIF money going, um, to pay to take down private property bins, but it passed, you know? I mean, you just, you, you come to the council with what you have, and, and you try to bring your idea forward, and it either makes it or it doesn't. But there's no railroading, there is no collusion by any member of this council. And that's all I have to say.
Anybody else for public forum? Can move on to consent agenda. Any additions or corrections?
No.
Motion to approve, so.
Second.
Will call.
Wolman.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Tombs.
Yes.
Stankham.
Yep.
Okay, ordinance 502, 507, this is our third reading.
This is the third reading, and this is the ordinance to clarify the, the issue regarding corrugated siding to be on buildings, only permissible on buildings sixty-four square feet or less.
Motion to approve.
Second?
I'll second.
Will call.
Muller.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Wolman.
Yes.
Tombs.
Yes.
Stankham.
Yep.
Okay, ordinance 508. Scott, you want to bring up something?
Yeah, this is the one then on the residential design standards. And I do want to talk through this a little bit, because John Meredith had been in a couple days ago, talking about, specifically about the design standards and whether they're, how you interpret that, and, and are they subject to interpretation? And, you know, it certainly would say that there is lots of areas where you could say that, that it's subject to interpretation. But I did, you know, I wanted to mainly speak here for the council about this too, about this concept of, of interpretation and how I would interpret things. You know, we have three people who are involved in zoning administration, and it's me and the mayor and Eric Hawkinson. So we had talked about this, about specific things like, question came up, what, what are decorative value-added windows? You know, so would this include blinds or etched glasses or, or inserts or anything like that? Well, the, the easy answer out of that was, a decorative window is anything other than a standard window. So if it has the plastic inserts in it, if it has an arch top, if it, if it has some amount of etched glass or anything like that, yeah, it certainly is going to, in, in our mind, it's, it's going to be a decorative value-added window. Same thing was brought up in regards to decorative garage doors. And, uh, question, is a raised panel garage door decorative? And again, it's kind of the same, same deal, that if there's anything other than a, a plain garage door, it's going to, it would be considered to be decorative. And you see raised panel garage doors all over town, they would, they would all qualify then to be a, a raised, it'd be, that'd be a decorative garage door. Then the last one, specific one that came up was two-tone color scheme, does this include just the siding materials, or does it include the whole house, including the roof? And in, in that case, I would say that it, it excludes the roof, it deals with siding materials. But those were, were three specific instances. And I guess my point being that, you know, I, I see the application of this being pretty liberal, that if, if folks have an, an argument for why they think that something is decorative and meets one of the, one of the criteria, it, it likely would, would fall within approval. It just, don't see it being extremely rigid, but just understand that the way things are, it certainly is a lot of interpretation on that, and, and we would interpret it loosely. And, you know, I guess that we don't want to go through an approvals process and then come to the city council for an approval, and you go, ah, I disagree with this. You know, I just wanted to kind of lay that out with, for everybody, and make sure that they knew the way that, that we were looking at this.
I got a question, Scott. Is that tinted too, is that one of your decorative?
What's that?
Tinted, tinted.
Tell, tell us who you are.
Tinted windows?
Yeah, is tinted windows, is that, um, what is that, that's very?
Just any, anything other than a standard.
Other than a standard window, tinted, tinted window will work.
Okay.
For a decorative. Instead of like, you know, lead or wood in between, or whatever they say, you know, a lot of people, you know, a lot have raised ones, you know, but a lot of people don't want raised ones, you know, because they're hard to clean and stuff. You know, you guys got to use a little common sense, you know, on some of these projects. You know, another thing, I was thinking of these shutters on the house, you know, but I don't know how, you know, most of us are older, you know, some of us are older than younger, but, you know, I've heard people say the, the newer houses, someone says, oh, yeah, a lot of people are going to shutters. Oh my God, most of the time back in the seventies when the shutters were, most of them took them off because Robins had it, Woss hadn't asked them. You know, I don't see the point why you put something like shutters on a house anyway. I mean, someone's bringing up, you know, me, like, that's something coming back, well, you know, that's fine and dandy, but I don't think you should, you know, tell somebody that you got to have shutters on your house, you know, I know your criteria is like four of them out here, but why would you ever come up with shutters for a one? I mean, that's just my opinion, guys. I mean, if I was building a house myself, you know, which I built back in the days, I never had these rules, but another thing is, after you guys, you had somebody build a house, nobody came back and inspected that house, see if this is in, you know, criteria. You know, I get, I'm not going to name any names, but I know a lot of them are bad in this town. But they, you guys let them go ahead and do it, and then our tax dollars end up paying for some of this stuff.
I could just point on that too, because that we, the last ordinance that was, was implemented, does institute a zoning compliance permit, so it occurs at the end of the project to make sure that the project was, was completed as the permit was issued for. Okay?
Yeah.
That's just, just checking for the, for the project itself, we do not have a building code, you know, as far as the construction itself.
Well, see, before, you know, I was, I ain't up to with everything in the city here, what you guys are all doing, but, you know, my son's building the house, they're building the house, and I said, well, first thing he says, shutters? Well, he's got three of my least criteria of the house, that's why I brought up the windows. Why don't inspect him with like lead glass, and you guys tell him how to build a house? You know, if you build a house, most of you guys up here ain't going to build a house, another house, you know? You know, there's younger generation coming out the line, you got to look at that way too. You know, and, you know, as far as I'm concerned, you know, like you said, you know, just like Rich was saying, over there, you know, you know, get a carpenter to figure it out, they work every day, and then, like you said, nobody applied. Well, you know, that's just a bad deal for the city and myself. Somebody should have applied that, you know, like you said, there are plenty of carpenters around here. And, you know, it's worse, you know, this on this here, I don't, is it all passed, or what's going on?
We're doing the second reading tonight. That's passed three times.
Okay.
This is the second reading.
Well, I think, you know, I, I think you guys should put up the vote, the city.
The council's going to vote.
Just the council votes.
No, community.
Well, you know, I just, I, to me, I don't think that's right, but that's, you know, that's beyond, you know, but, and that's all I got to say to you guys.
Thank you. Any more discussion on 508? Is your motion to approve?
I'll make that motion.
Second?
I'll second it.
I'd like to have a little more discussion than.
Go ahead.
In the council. I would, if anything, I would at least like to have Whitey and Vicky here to look these people in the eyes and tell them, the people that, of Lakeview, to tell them how to build their house. You know, there's a lot of people against this, because, um, they, they don't want the city to tell them how to build their house. There is nothing wrong with the code we have on the books now, and to make the whole town a neighborhood, whatever you call those things, is, to me, is ridiculous. And it's ridiculous to all these people that are here at the council meeting, that Whitey doesn't see, that Vicky doesn't see, and, and a whole slug of other people amongst the community. I've gotten a lot of calls about this thing, and, um, it's a shame if we pass something like this to make a young couple that wants to build a house, tell them how to build their house, or anybody else.
May I ask a question?
I'm totally against this.
Okay, go ahead.
Are they going a house or a shouse?
A house, a regular house.
Okay.
Yep.
And I encourage the council to either table it until you, you guys are here, or to vote no.
I'm not, I'm not against you, wait till I get back, that's fine by me. One of the things that I heard to say about, you know, they want to put it up to a vote, well, as a councilman, you cast your vote for a council that you think's going to make the right decision for the city of Lakeview, that's, that's, that's why they have a council. And if there is always something that anybody disagrees on all the time, and we put it up for a vote for the city, we can get nothing done, so. But I'm sure glad, I'm glad the way to come to that council meeting, you want to table this, I'm, I'm all for it, and I, I'll take back my bullshit, I'll look anybody in the eye, we'll talk about it. I'm not afraid of that at all, so. That's up to you guys, rest of you guys, whatever you think.
I think they're going to be tabled.
You're retracting your motion, Whitey?
Yeah, I'd say we table it till we get there, so I can look everybody in the eye.
Okay.
I'll make.
We'll just wait.
They have a motion to table them.
I'll make a motion to table this. Second?
I'll second it.
Will call.
Okay, so the motion is to table, and we'll call Wolman.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Muller.
Yes.
Tombs.
Yes.
Stankham.
Yep.
Okay, ordinance 509, that's a building permit change. Second reason.
Hey. Since that pertains to the first motion.
I'll second that, that we tabled.
House. Will call, yes.
Yeah. Wolman.
Yes.
Muller.
Yes.
Reese.
Yes.
Tombs.
Yes.
Stankham.
Yes.
I have, if you have a question then on timing of this, then, um, I understand Whitey would be back at, at the next city council meeting, which would be on the 16th?
Yep, I'll be back.
And Vicky would not, I guess, what's your, when, when does this go on the next agenda then?
I'm uncomfortable, Vic.
I'd like to see the full council here.
We're in no hurry.
That would be the, it'll end up being the second meeting then in April. Whatever the date, the second meeting in April.
So is it, is it then the second reading of the ordinance is what's been tabled, is that?
Yep, yep, we'll, we'll pick it up, we'll pick it up here at the time, you know, it'll be the second reading order, but.
I, you know, I, I've, I've heard from lots of people too, that are on the, of course, the other side of things, you know, I guess you go to the councilperson that you think supports your view. Um, you know, a lot of people are upset about some of the things that are going up, whether they meet the design criteria or not, and quite frankly, I'm sure most of them that are going up right now do. People are still upset about the size or whatever, so everybody has all kinds of different opinions on different things. I find it marginally that anybody could build a house and not meet four of these criteria. You know, I don't know why we're focusing on shutters, or focusing on one thing, when you have eighteen things and you only need four, and the main four, everybody kind of just overlooks, and we're looking at gables, or we're looking at overhangs, or we're looking at recessed roofs, or recessed porches, seems to me that those are on most houses. Um, so anyway, I, I'm, I'm fine with it.
I guess I am.
My phone number's on the website, anybody ever wants to call.
I guess I feel that. The main reason people are upset is because they've always made up their own mind how they wanted to build a house, and now they're putting the blocks to it.
You're already telling them where to go on the property lines already now.
Well, I know.
Well, then they don't need it.
Mike?
I, I agree. Um, I don't know why you want a third party involved. I mean, it's, the government's got their hand in enough stuff already that we don't like, and you're, you're putting the third party involved in this again. Like Vicki says, right, she said it herself, most people building are going to have four pieces of this criteria. So why, why are we going through this whole process when most people are gonna do it anyway? I think, I think the biggest thing is, people are having the rebuttal about it because of the third party situation. Most people building new or remodeling are going to have this criteria, most of them. You might have one out of a thousand, I don't know how many for sure, but it, it's the idea of having a, somebody telling you, you have to do it.
I understand that, Mike, but on the same token, those few that, that have not in the past, or maybe would not in the future, confined to any kind of a design, hurts the property values of the people in the neighborhoods where they build. And we don't have new additions to build in, we have a lot of vacant lots, and so there is building going on slowly, but in those vacant lots, and I think we're going to have more of that as we proceed in the next, next decade. And so I think this helps protect your property values of the people that are living in the neighborhoods. I firmly believe that, and I know, I know there's a difference of opinion. That, that is the whole reason for this whole design criteria.
Well, I think the city has their hands full just trying to take care of what's already here. The, the neighborhoods that aren't picked up, the projects that are started, the rooted property that got started and spent a hundred twenty-three thousand dollars on that isn't finished. It's still an eyesore.
Yep, it's the layers that are holding it up, not us.
Well, I, I don't know why we spent a hundred twenty-three thousand dollars to get it to where it is, and it's not finished.
But if the layers were a little different, we'd be done. We can't do anything else then. We're doing the best we can.
Well, it's, I, I think there's other properties that need, need that, instead of trying to throw your hat in another ring that's.
Okay, thank you. Throw, throw the ordinance out.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Twenty sixteen, bought the acquisition of the property on eight twelve fourth.
Yeah, so what I, what I would point out to you, it's on page thirteen of the council packet, is this court order on the, on the property at, at eight twelve High Street. So this is the Cory Weber property. Okay, so, um, you can see the court order there that, basically, this gives, this gives the title to the, to the city as a vacant property, that it did, that it had, had been vacated, it had gone to court, and, uh, the court found in this, in the city's favor in regards to six fifty seven eight ten of the, of the state code. So, um, you see the, the date on that was, what, sometime in, in late January, there was a thirty day period that we allowed to expire on, on appeals possibilities. Anyway, this, this resolution tonight, on chapter, on page fifteen, excuse me, would, would have the city accept the property and, and approve the acquisition of it for the court order.
Motion on twenty sixteen?
Motion to approve.
Second?
Yeah, I guess I, I guess it's also.
That was the second one, the church?
Yes.
We'll call.
Moller?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wolman?
Yes.
Toms?
Much regret, yes.
Stankham?
Yes.
Like that. So that did, we just accepted the property, then Cory.
Okay. Now, can I ask what, what is gonna happen with it? I, I never could get a clear title to it. That's why I, Nabi was gonna knock it down last week there in February, and he was told to stop. But, and I understand it was out of time, but what, what is gonna happen to it now? That's.
Really, that, that's what would be my next discussion with, with the council about, about how it is that we would propose then to dispose of the property, because the city, of course, does not wanna continue to be the owner of that property.
After, after this, does the city have a clear title? That's what I was told would happen, correct?
No, cause our attorney had done the title, had done the lane search, and, and there was no lane there for it.
No, I had two lawyers look at it, and I don't know, they, and they said there was.
Okay.
So did the bank. I bank at Farmer State Bank, they said, don't touch it, don't put another dollar in it until this gets cleared up. And it was in the Wall Lake Attorney Office, and it was over here at another one, and.
Yeah.
If, if I would had it my way, I mean, it would've, it would've been gone.
Sure.
It would've been built on.
Uh, I guess I, I would just tell the council that Dave Janet's supposed to be here, was that some mock trial, uh, thing today, running away late, and, um, is available, is available by phone if you have specific questions. Otherwise, he's not, he's not gonna be participating.
Cory, did you, Cory, did you go to the court hearing?
No, I didn't, I never opened the paper, Vic, and then, when I gone on vacation, and I took the paper to a lawyer to make an appeal, and it never got done.
Yes.
And by the time I got back from vacation, it was basically too late.
Missed it.
You know, as we talked about this with the council, I'm on top of page three about opportunities then for how you would dispose of the property. There are some options there, you know, about whether you would take sealed bids on, on the property, you can just take sealed bid on the property, sell the property as is, and, and the new owner is, is able to do with it what they want. Okay? You can put some restrictions on, on the sale of that property. You wanna take sealed bids for the property, and said that the house needed to be rehabbed or, or removed within four to six months, or whatever you might choose.
Yes, wait, the house needs to come down, and it shouldn't be a stipulation.
Um, other things that we can do is, is you can take, basically take proposals on that that, that allows the council to, to consider the type of projects that, that would be done there, uh, not just considering price alone. So if you said that, if the council wouldn't say, I'm, I'm more interested in having somebody build a house there than I am having somebody build a, that, that could enter into your, into your thought process. The other thing that, that I would, I wanna throw this out to you, although I would not even recommend it yet, that we're, we have this newly forming nonprofit housing development group, and the city is able to transfer property into this nonprofit group. Now, it's not formed yet, we're still working on all of the, all of the legal documents that go along with it. So the timing on this one isn't right, isn't real good, and truth be told, the location of the property's not a, a real attractive, uh, piece there, right by the, the highway and the biards, so that may not be a real good use for that, but it would, we need to have the council decide, you know, how it is that you would like to dispose of that property, cause the way things are now, we're just the owner, and, uh, we'll have the maintenance responsibility on it from now on.
There's no harm in waiting till Janet shows up here with it.
No.
I'd like to see it tabled, tell Janet it's available, um, and make sure that Cory has knowledge of that by personal contact.
Nathan, do you have something?
I just got a question, I mean, does Cory get anything out of it, or does the city just take it from him? And what was the reasoning that this happened? Just a general question.
Just give me a clue, how many years you think that building's looked at right? Couple of years?
Before he bought it?
Yeah, it's time to go.
I'm just asking, so the city, and the city just took it?
Six fifty seven ten A is the state code.
Yeah, I was just asking.
Yep, that's what it is.
And?
And we talked to Cory many times, haven't we?
Yep. Look, can I ask one other question? Why has Reardon's property not been taken? Why has that not been dealt with?
We're waiting for the attorneys. Turns out, the rumor is, well, never mind, it's just the attorneys.
We, uh, we have a court order on that one too, but truth, truthfully, yeah, we're, we're waiting on the enforcement of the court order.
I, I'm concerned about the clear title that he says that he's checked on.
Well, that's why we're waiting for Janet to get here.
Yeah, so, otherwise, I'd just reset my motion also, and, and wait to table it.
And, and maybe there isn't anything against it, it's the two attorneys that I talked to said, there, there was one on there that it needed to be signed off on, and.
We would still want verification.
I, I, I completely understand.
Okay, um, just to answer Nate's question on, especially detailing pertaining to any money, you know, if we, if we sell the property and we sell it for some amount of money, okay, the city recoups our cost out of that, which would be in any procedural cost, but mainly any attorney cost, and if there's money left over, it does go back to Cory.
Goes back to the court? I thought it went back to the former owner.
It does, it goes back to Cory.
Oh, Cory, oh, I see, sorry.
We'll wait for Janet to, we can talk to her in face to face.
Yeah.
When, when that comes, can someone call me or just stop, stop down?
I'll stop and tell you.
Okay, thank you.
We're talking about the housing needs, where's our young lady?
You're sitting in the back row, just back there nice and quiet.
Scott, I figured you were gonna take care of this for me?
No, we're looking, we're looking for a presentation.
Dang it. I like it when I can just sit there. Uh, Scott, you did give him the chapter, right?
I did, yes.
Okay, so, over the past couple of months, I've been working with SETD and all the cities in the county to complete this housing needs assessment. What you have in front of you is the Lakeview section. This is what the whole thing looks like, so, to save paper, um, we didn't print it all. If you want it, I can easily send it to you, um, but really what I'm asking tonight is for your approval of your section. This would, has been gone over with, um, Scott and the Housing Committee, um, a member of our staff, and Brandy Ripley from SETD. So what we did is, we went through the information that is there in the front pages, it has been taken from the census, the assessor, um, and then with some input from the committee, it has been kind of analyzed to come up with the story that is in front of you to tell about the housing, um, environment in Lakeview. So through the data analysis and conversations, the last page of that packet is some, uh, goals, and I think there's three or four of them. Hold on, four, yes. So there's four of them, these were brought up, discussed, and kind of developed through those discussions. Um, nothing out of the ordinary, those are pretty common goals throughout the county, um, and actually, the county has the infill lots development, yeah, the infill lots and property development in theirs as well. Basically, this is kind of just setting a path for the Housing Committee and the Council kind of going forward for some housing projects. The SETD wanted this plan in place so that when they talk to developers, they can say that, hey, we wanna do housing, we want these changes to happen, we think they will benefit us, we've thought it through, this isn't just, all of a sudden, you're coming to us, we wanna do it. This is something we need, something that'll benefit not only our city, but our county as a whole. So that's kind of why this plan was developed. Um, you were the first ones we're talking to for adoption, um, but I think within the next month or so, it'll go to the SETD board with hopefully all the cities on board. Do you make questions?
You did a good job.
I got a question. Who are you?
Lauren Sandler with Region Twelve, Council of Government of Carroll. Sorry.
Okay, do we have a motion on twenty seventeen to accept this?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
We'll call.
Hey, Moller?
Yes.
Wolman?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Toms?
Yes.
Stankham?
Yes.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, we're gonna consider the asphalt street project, Reese?
Yeah, we're gonna take a look at this street that was at the, at your chair tonight, hopefully you guys got that email that I, that I had sent to you, and that, this does show, uh, when, when we bid that street project, there was a, an accuracy on this one bid, so we had them, them, uh, correct the bid and, and get it initial, and, anyway, what that does is put that, the cost down really exactly where we thought it was gonna be. We had, had planned for a two hundred thousand dollar project, bid comes in at two hundred thousand eight oh three, and the, the inaccuracy or the inconsistency is there on items four and five, when they were here looking at this and give us an initial, uh, bid price on it, item four and five were combined into one item. So, and the total price of four and five was that fifty-seven thousand that they struck out. So anyway, that's the, uh, they have corrected that, and, and the bid is where we thought that it needs to be, and we're, uh, ready to move forward with it.
Motion to approve that, so, second?
I'll second it.
We'll call.
Wolman?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Moller?
Yes.
Toms?
Yes.
Stankham?
Yes.
Okay, we have a first pay estimate on the library project.
Yeah, and so this, uh, is for land in construction, they're just getting things rolling, looking at their, at their ordering, but this is also then for, for bonds and insurance pay estimate, number one, seven thousand thirty-four dollars, seventy-five cents.
Motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
I'll second it.
We'll call.
Moller?
Yes.
Reese?
Yes.
Wolman?
Yes.
Toms?
Yes.
Stankham?
Yes.
Okay, our SRF projects.
Yeah, a couple of those SRF projects, uh, the Fish Barrier Project, the, you see that the state had bid that, and you see what the costs are, and that's on page twenty. So just to know that the, uh, the Fish Barrier Project is, has been bid by the, the state, low bidder on this is a company called Landwear Construction, they're out of, I think, St. Todd, Minnesota. Um, the cost was about eighty-seven thousand dollars over the resources that they had available, but the DNR is going to go ahead and cover that, and, uh, they are proceeding then through the approvals on that, and anticipating that, uh, that would be approved in, in a timely manner, cause the other thing to note for the council, what I identified is a very important deadline about the, the city and our funding, that we, we need to have our loan amendment, including the sponsored project, it needs to be executed by May first. So the DNR is, is gonna get their project awarded, and then we'll be able to get our, our contract in place, we'll actually have a separate contract, our contract will actually be with Tucks Unlimited on it, they're doing the designing contract administration. Everything's coming together well on that. Uh, the other project is the, uh, the Bio Retention Cell Project at the landing at East Shore. We do have an updated, uh, cost from King Construction, so that's Bobby Terrell's contractor out there, cost is a hundred thirty-nine thousand one seventy-seven. Um, it's been, uh, presented that way to the, to the DNR, DNR's on, on board, ready to go with this. They, uh, we need to get, we, I need council approval on, on this, and we'll send it to the, to the DNR for their final go ahead, and then you'll see a contract come back from, from King Construction.
Does it just go to the swell?
Yes, that's a, that's a Bio Retention Cell, and it includes all storms that were working the ditch too.
Need a motion to approve?
Yeah, it would be to forward the proposal from King to the DNR.
I'll make that motion to forward.
Second?
I'll second it.
We'll call.
Moller?
Yes.
Toms?
Yes.
Wolman?
Yep.
Reese?
Yes.
Stankham?
Yes.
Did you hit on the lagoon startup?
Uh, just, yeah, my last thing dealing with the, uh, the lagoon startup, the, you saw the, uh, correspondence from the engineer in the council packet, um, stating that, that they would, would cut over and divert the flow from the sewer plant between March tenth and March twelfth. I have an email that I printed out for you, and this is, this is a construction update from the contractor, and, uh, just wanna go through this, it will be at the bottom of, of the front page there for, for Mitch's initial email to me. So, where they said this week, they're, they're working on setting the LS pumps, that's lift station pumps, so they're setting the lift station pumps, getting our plugs moved to clean a few pipe segments. The boring contractor that bored through that, through that big hill, they're coming out next week to clean the line, and then run the mix with televised. The grading for the structures in the UV, that arrives tomorrow, so that is the metal walkways, and, uh, the, uh, the covers for the, for the pits, they all arrive tomorrow. Healy is coming back to finish grade, uh, the week of the twenty-third, okay, so that does push off a couple of weeks. Then it says Jetco is coming the twenty-third, and Electric Pump a few days later, so Jetco is the controls company, and Electric Pump, uh, comes a few days later then, and they'll have the lift station ready to start up. When they, uh, when they get that lift station ready to go, then they can start to, to fill the lagoons, and then they would anticipate it takes about a month to, to fill the lagoons. The old plant, yeah, it says the old plant has been located, that's just saying. The old plant, it says the old plant has been located. That's just saying all the utilities have been located there and the manhole is ready to set. Just need pumps and controls in the new lift station to get started. So and after that lift station is started, they would move to the north trunk and bore that in. So that's the one they're at TCT that they still gotta bore the highway. They talk about Troy with the, yeah?
On this, I'm sorry to interrupt, but this boring, uh, this camera through the pipe that goes through that big hill?
Yeah.
Now, I know they'll be doing it. Will our engineer be there or will who will be watching this when this gets done?
Well, we'll have to check. They, we have that resident observer there and we'll, we can make sure that he's there when that happens. Troy?
Yeah, so I think if they set the eyes on that, possibly can, you know, like I said, I'm a little worried about that, but we'll see what happens.
Okay. Yeah, again, about Troy working with the punch list, uh, items. Grendman Hicks been knocking them off and they'll keep working on the punch list while they're filling the lagoons. Okay, well, once the lagoons have enough water in them, they string the aeration across and they start up the blowers and start up the sager. So that's kind of the, the timing about how that occurred. So I, I got that email from him this morning and, and called him right back right away because, because this basically has startup occurring then sometime after the twenty-third. And we had, we're under the assumption here that it happens sometime between the tenth and the twelfth. So that is his response. It's actually a, a different email that he sent to me and the engineers about why it is that that they're looking at the twenty-third, the week of the twenty-third to have that all done. So.
And did you have a response from the engineer after that email?
Yeah, yeah, I called him and, and I called Todd Pennington and he was, he was fine with the way things were working out. You know, what this does is push things off a couple of weeks again, but, uh, other than that, really, there's no harm in the project.
As long as it's right when it's done.
Yeah. Yeah. The other thing, uh, to note for sure, we do have a construction meeting scheduled with contractor and the engineer. Okay, that's on Friday the thirteenth. So it's Friday the thirteenth. It'll be at ten thirty out there at the Lusick site.
We have a city general street board.
Couple of good things on that Moore project, the Catalyst Grant project downtown. If you've seen any of the, of the pictures, like on Facebook, they're, they're really coming together and all of the, uh, basically all the drywall is, is all done upstairs. It's really coming together, looking nice. So, uh, he actually had the, uh, the flooring guy lined up for the eighteenth of April and, and everything should come together prior to that time, get flooring down and, and he'd be done with the interior work. Saw the, uh, the windows went in the front and they're starting to do some of the front of the side. So Nate has submitted the paperwork for our first, uh, grant draw on, on that. And, uh, we submitted that, that grant draw for the initial sixty thousand dollars. Next issue, uh, we've talked a little bit with, about Nora Schultz and, and the bicycles down there at, at the campground. Would we, could we find a way to, uh, work with Nora so that, that there can be some bicycles for rent down there? Nora's looking at purchasing the bicycles and then the city would, would be able to have city staff there to, to attend to them. She would be responsible for a building that they would go into and whatnot. And, uh, she's done a lot of work on this and figuring out how the, uh, how the transaction can actually occur. And there's a, uh, an internet based app. It's called SpinLister, but you can kind of think of it more like Uber. That everything's done through this app, paid for, uh, with, with credit cards. She's able to keep deposit money open through that if, if there's ever any damage. Had some real good thoughts about that. And then as she's working with her attorney about setting up this little business and, and having, and agreeing with the city about how it could be there. Um, she had run into some concerns about indemnification from the city and really what happens when there are problems with, with the bikes, you know, is there, is there any maintenance issues with the bikes? And somebody comes back and it caused damage to the bikes, you're, you're relying on city staff to, to bring that to light. So there were some issues yet there really to be worked out, which really kind of raised red flags with her. She also though did ask then about, about whether the city would, would consider just ownership of the bikes and then we would, and then we would own that. Um, you know, I guess my response to her was that I just didn't see anything happening for this year if we wanted to proceed. So.
What about insurance? What about locker liabilities, safety equipment, stuff like that? Do they wear, don't wear?
Yeah, that, uh, you know, as we checked with our insurance company, we were okay on that and we did not, there was no additional insurance required for the city. Okay, now Nora certainly would have to have additional insurance on, on the bikes, but there was, uh, there was nothing that was additional gonna be required of the city. But really, and this is, it's, we're to the point now where there's a little stumbling block again about damage to the bikes and, uh, you know, if somebody returns a bike and it's damaged and city staff didn't notice, how do you address that? So these are, like I say, still some, some, some stumbling issues. And whether this, so her answer to that was, well, does, would the city be interested in just completely owning the bikes and that's, that's a discussion for another day.
Can I make a comment? I wonder if, if she could look at how they like enterprise those cars, you know, because when you rent a car, they walk around and look at it and you sign off that it's okay. Then when you return it, they would walk around and, and look at it again. What if it would work with the bike?
It's just that the deal is, you know, they're her bikes and you're relying on the city staff to do that.
Right.
And that's the issue.
That's a nice analogy.
Some of staffing applications are, are gonna be due on Friday. So, and we sure could especially use some utility floaters and those are eighteen-year-old, uh, folks. And those, it's just tough to get, to get those folks. And we still need, uh, parks, maintenance worker again too. So need a couple of those too by, by Friday hopefully. Uh, four oh eight Main Street. The, uh, the inspector's been here to conduct that asbestos inspection. And actually I have a real good, uh, report on that. There, there is some, some asbestos up there, but it's on three things. It's basically around the domestic around the, the drain pipes. He said there's about a twenty-five foot strip of some, uh, and route or so, or some type of, of something that's easily accessible that needs to be removed. So Randy Blom did the inspection for us. He's contacting a couple of contractors, but thought that the, uh, that it would cost a couple of thousand dollars to have this removed. So it's not, uh, not a lot of dollars involved with that. And then, uh, the other side of that, when you, if you're looking at the demolition, we have about thirty thousand dollars on the demolition.
Thirty, so we're at thirty-two thousand?
Yep. Just got an email today from, from the DNR, uh, Arger, uh, Arger people, the tree people. We had them perform a, a tree inventory for us. It's been about ten years ago. Now they're offering to update that again and they can do four of these projects statewide. I need to get back with them and just confirm that there's no cost to it, but otherwise I think this is something that we would do again and have them update our tree inventory. And they come to a physical inspection, note anything that's, you know, really needing to be addressed. And then they'll also be around here to take a good close look, see if Emerald Ashbore or anything, other concerns like that too. And Hometown Pride Comedy Night is Friday out at the golf course. We, we still have some tickets available for anybody who's looking for a, some Friday, excuse me, Saturday night entertainment. Sac County League also, Lakeview hosts Sac County League next week, next Wednesday, the eleventh, out at the docket.
Motion to adjourn, so we'll, second?
I'll second it.
In adjourn.